Good afternoon, everyone. Thank everyone for joining us. Today is March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, three thirty. This is a joint maintenance and development meeting. Joint meeting with maintenance and development and economic development. We're joined with EverSource and of course, some of the counselors. I'll briefly still turn it over to our chair, co-chair, Counselor Curran, and then we can introduce some members. Sean Curran, Chair of Economic Development.
I'm Alan. I'm actually not on either of these committees, but I'm on the council.
Bill Boy from Forest Park.
Julia Day, I'm the Director of Gas System Engineering at EverSource.
David Vellis, Director of Field Operations for EverSource Electric, Questramas.
And Amy Henderson, Community Relations Specialist for Springfield.
I'm Doug Orton. I'm the Vice President of Distribution Rates and Regulatory Requirements at EverSource. Thank you for having us.
Mike Fidabelli, Director of Community Relations for EverSource.
Keegan Ritchie, Director of Gas Destruction for EverSource.
Thank you, and I see a few people. I'll say their names if you can introduce yourself. I see Ms. Bowlin.
Peter Bowlin, FPCA.
That's Forest Park, so.
Forest Park, okay. And I see Chris.
Chris Signoli, DPW Director, City of Springfield.
And I see a Harry.
Yeah, I'm Harry Seymour, and I am the Chair of the Historical Committee for the Forest Park Civic Association.
Patrick Greenhaw.
Oh, yes, Chair of the Board of Assessors for the City of Springfield.
Young.
Yes, Young No, the city's Director of Internal Audit.
I see an iPhone.
Hi, this is Ryan Earl with EverSource Government Affairs. Just listening in.
Okay, I see Counselor Perez.
Hi, everyone.
Patrick.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you introduce yourself, and one more, and we're.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Stephen Bonacani, City Service Attorney.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Basically, I know that we had some concerns as far as just how the actual breakdowns when it comes to the services. I think a lot of times I was more curious as far as numbers and things like that. I appreciate you guys coming down, and I know a lot of even constituents and people. When you're talking numbers and different, it's different from actual services that are available. So it's kind of apples and oranges. I kind of wanted to get into some of the meat and potatoes of the numbers. So I'll still, you know, defer to Counselor Curran and let him.
If we could, before we get into the numbers, how we arrived at this meeting. So there was an agenda item on the council agenda for easements. And basically, anytime a petitioner, EverSource would have been a petitioner, comes before the council, somebody has to speak to the agenda item. There's a good reason for that. So that way, the councils are not simply blindly voting without knowing what we're voting for. Not having someone in the chamber, Moll made the motion to send this to committee so we can learn about it rather than simply voting on easements, and I seconded the motion. So basically, I think the first part of the meeting is simply just go over those agenda items. You know, and maybe we can explain what they are, what those easements are. So that's, that was the whole impetus behind the meeting. So I was not expecting this many EverSource representatives for easements, but that you're here, I think it's fantastic that you're engaged with the community. But that was the reason why this was sent to committee. And other utilities and whatnot are treated the same way once, if there weren't a petitioner in the chamber. So, so why don't we maybe start off, Moll, before we get into the numbers? Let's go over the easements that we're going to vote on in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, so just quickly, I'll just start off because I've had conversations with each of you, and thank you for your time leading into this. So, you know, again, the projects that were presented a couple of weeks ago, we do have Keegan Ritchie here, who is the Director of Gas Construction. That, yep, so all the projects were related to the gas system enhancement plan, and Keegan will kind of go over that in a little more detail. And then also, we do have Doug here, Doug Orton, our Vice President of Rates, to speak about some of the financial numbers that Counsel Brown and I spoke about. To kind of really kind of explain how the process is made in relation to the build, but also how relation to Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mike. So, you know, I'll start off with just, you know, apologizing for no one being present at the meeting to discuss that. You know, I think there's, we'll call it a miscommunication.
But apologies aren't necessary. It happens.
I mean, but just. So I just, I guess where I wanted to go with that was just kind of explaining the process that we have with Chris Signoli and the DPW, and how these projects get presented, and why we just, you know, I guess from our side, thought it was more of kind of a, just a formality perspective. We typically will walk all these projects and walk the line of Simon and discuss with the DPW, and that's how they even make it to committee. So that's kind of, our process has always been that way. And, you know, I think in the future, we do plan to have representation from an operational side that can speak to these projects to give you guys more clarity on what these projects are. So that was just kind of the starting point. All of the projects that were presented at the last committee meeting and will be presented in the future, and there's a list of any remaining projects that will be presented to you guys for approval in this packet are part of our gas replacement program that we have across the entire state of Massachusetts. That's, you know, to sum it up in a real quick term, it's to replace leak-prone pipe, leak-prone pipe across the state of Massachusetts. Risky pipe that is aging infrastructure, is brittle, cannot stand up. Some of it's been in the ground since prior to nineteen hundred. And as I know you all are aware, our crews are out nightly basis, especially in the winter, repairing these gas leaks. So it's to mitigate and to replace that leak-prone pipe and get it out of the system, improve the safety, number one of our system, and for our customers and your constituents, and make the system more reliable to ensure that there's no gas outages. So that's really the fundamental reason why we do these projects. I can tell you, you want to ask some things?
No.
Okay, so that's really what we, what those projects are for, to replace leak-prone pipe.
And what, 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 where do you get, as far as like the customer, consumer? What is the consumer's fee on that? How do you, how are you breaking that down?
So I'll let Doug speak to how that works. I'm not an expert in rates or regulatory, but I will kind of, I guess we could either roll into that, or I could go through this presentation, however you prefer.
Well, I don't, I kind of want it to be constructive, you know, kind of like interactive, you know? Like, we can keep skipping back and forth as it be pain.
Sure. I can jump in on the rate side quickly and then hand it back to Keegan and take any questions. So in, generally speaking, the rates that we charge is issued for all utility companies, right? We have three hundred and thirty thousand customers in what's our EverSource Gas and Massachusetts service territory. It was formerly Columbia Gas, and prior to that, it was Bay State Gas. So that, those customers, every customer in that service territory pays the same rate based on whether you're a residential customer, a commercial customer, or what class of customer that you are. The program that Keegan is talking about, the Gas System Enhancement Program, is a specific program, and Keegan will take us through, that has federal and state requirements for us to get this essentially dangerous pipe out of the ground as quickly as we can over a set timeframe. So there's a program that came about around two thousand and fourteen as a separate process before the DPU. I know that you were interested in seeing some numbers, so we provided, we have here copies of the last two filings that takes you through soup to nuts, but go ahead.
So when you're factoring these repairs, this is throughout what space? What areas are this? What is this? This is throughout Western Mass, Eastern Mass? Is this, this is everything, right? What, what, what is this factoring in?
Yeah, so it's the, our EverSource, mostly Western Mass service territory. And again, there's three hundred and thirty thousand customers in that region that all go through the same rate-making process, if you will. We have a list of towns. I don't know if it's in here or if it's in a separate document.
But there is other towns.
Absolutely.
Outside of Western Mass factoring in.
And what? Yeah, so what happens is, and again, Keegan will talk about these specific projects, but we have a mandate to take the leak-prone infrastructure out of the ground for safety and reliability reasons, and the Department of Public Utilities establishes a rate that's charged to everybody.
And what's the percentage as far as repair based in? Because I'm curious, as far as if you have something over there in other areas, what's the rate as far as repair in our area and their area?
So I can actually speak to that. Springfield actually has the most leak-prone pipe in all of our EGMA territories and all of Massachusetts, in fact. So that includes our N-Star Gas Company as well as our EGMA Company. Forty-one percent of the gas mains in Springfield are leak-prone. And if you actually look on the first slide of the deck, it kind of gives you a nice visual of where that pipe is. And as you can tell, all of the surrounding communities in Western Mass have far less leak-prone pipe than the City of Springfield does. That has to do with, over the years, whether it was Columbia Gas and now EverSource, the amount of work that has been done in the City of Springfield is not as much as the other towns. So at this point, we have forty-one percent of all gas pipe, gas main pipe in the ground in Springfield is leak-prone pipe, which is one of the reasons why we have to, we have a lot of work to do, and that equates to about a hundred and eighty-five miles of pipe.
Okay, I could just say, my father worked in the street department of the gas company from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen ninety-five, so he probably put in all that.
Very good chance.
So, yeah.
He probably put the one on the top there.
Yeah, very well could have. Okay, as to the particular easements, maybe you guys can get into that. What we're going to be voting on, if you also really want to. No, I can't read that.
Okay, so if you actually skip to slide five, that's a good slide for us to kind of talk through here.
Okay.
So these are all the projects in the City of Springfield that we have a plan to complete this year. There's a status in the middle column there, kind of the status of where they are. Anything identified as the three-ten-twenty-five CC meeting was one of the projects that you guys deferred on making a decision on and on the three-ten meeting. Anything that says approved, you guys have already approved from this process. And then anything that says walked with Hector pending CCA, that's kind of what I talked about earlier. Hector is the individual from the DPW that we have these field walk downs when we're getting ready for the process to start a project, and that Hector is the one that gets it on your agenda. From that point, once you approve it, that's when we can work with Chris Signoli's team and actually start the permitting, permit applying application process. And once we receive a permit from Chris Signoli's team, then we would plan, schedule the work with our contractor.
If I may. One thing I just would kind of emphasize is that even when the budget comes before us, it's the mayor's budget, the city council, we kind of balance things. We have a maintenance and development department. So, you know, so sometimes with certain, and it's not your fault. I'm not saying that it's your fault by any means, but a lot of times with different things, entities will give the city department the information and not the counselors, where we do have different, you know, chairs and departments, where if you're interacting with us and we have this information, you know, a lot of times we're lobbying, and, you know, it's, you know, so I would just say in the future, you know, to make sure that you're interacting with the whatever, you know, maintenance and development and, and.
Yeah, I think there's definitely some easy wins there. We can improve on that. You know, whether it's emails to individual members of the maintenance and development committees or having representation at the city council meetings. We've talked internally about some improvements there. I think, you know, we were maybe a little disjointed on the EverSource side, on the individuals that were receiving the notifications of those meetings, and I think it would be an easy thing for us to either attend or provide you guys whatever you want to see as a project-by-project basis, whether it's maps or.
Well, that's why with the, with a maintenance and development, so a lot of times if you just come into our committee and just send it, sometimes you don't even got to come to the committee, but as long as our committee knows, like Counselor Perez is, Counselor, there's members, where as long as we know, now even say it was, let's say the last, last incident where there was no representation here, I could have still said, hey, you know what? We went over this. You know, you'll hear sometimes counselors talk on behalf of an entity because they've been vented, you know, so.
So on the, on the petition before, Southern Avenue, can you explain a little bit about that project real briefly?
Yeah, again, that's a, it's a replacement project, so we're going to be relaying two thousand five hundred thirty-five feet of main pipe in the ground, so that would be the main line in the street. And then we have forty-two service laterals associated with that, so that would be forty-two dwellings/businesses that we would need to then, after we install the gas main in the street, we do what we call a gas-up procedure. We initiate, we introduce gas into that new line.
And how, how long a two thousand feet is, would be what in terms of street mileage? The diameter of the street, what do you work for?
It's really about half a mile.
Half a mile?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. Yeah, so it's linear, and then sometimes, you know, we have lateral streets to the side, and.
And how long do you expect that project to take?
It, it depends on digging conditions, right? I know that's a vanilla answer, but we typically get about, you know, anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and eighty feet a day.
Okay.
And then, you know, five-day work weeks, obviously in accordance with the permit restrictions provided by.
And what part of Southern Avenue?
Yeah, I don't have that exact, but again, that's something like I was describing earlier. We have detailed engineered construction drawings for all of these projects. And I'd be happy to provide those after this meeting for you guys.
And then.
Sorry, and in the future, I'd be able to provide that to the committee in advance of us even bringing it to the council.
And I actually do have them on my laptop, so like, if you want to look over my shoulder or.
Yeah, just for that indication of my constituents who watch this video. I mean, that's why I'm just going through it, so they know what's coming into their neighborhood, you know, so. And the other big one would have been Page Boulevard is another major one. Can you describe that one briefly?
Yeah.
So five of them.
I think we have it as a different name on our list. Give me a second here. Okay, yeah, again, that's another GSET project, so again, three thousand feet of gas mains, so a little bit over a half mile, and then fifty-nine service laterals.
So those are two major projects.
They are, yeah.
And then the Commonwealth Avenue one, I'll watch the projects, is that one? Source Commonwealth.
What was Commonwealth, the electric one?
No.
It's Office Summer.
Yeah, I apologize. We haven't, we haven't listed.
It's okay. It looks like you got the two biggest ones, Westford Circle. That's not a major throwaway, but how, how many, how much?
Westward, yeah, Westward Circle, again, about thirty-one hundred feet and twenty-nine service.
Oh, wow, okay, so that's.
So although, all of this, these footages are on slide five of that report that I gave you.
Okay, I mean, that's kind of like the information we were looking for.
Yeah, originally.
And I'm glad you're able to provide it, you know, that is, these are major projects, and you're looking to get them situated as soon as you can get into the ground.
Yeah, I think, you know, kind of going back to that slide I showed at the beginning with all of the pipe in Springfield, the longer we delay start of these projects, that's just going to be more of a construction crew impact throughout the summer that Springfield is going to experience overall. So we really want to start as soon as possible.
And I guess one issue that I'm interested in, and this is apart from the numbers or how pipeline here in the city is assessed, and that's where we have our man in charge, Chris Signoli. How are you, Chris? He's doing a great job.
You're an absolutely wonderful Counselor Curran.
I know, everyone's always calling you for something there, Chris. And I brought this up with Chris before, and it's just one of these problems that we have in Springfield. So we're dealing with Water Department, we're dealing with EverSource, the gas company, we're dealing with the electric company, EverSource, and other utilities we have. And that's, from time to time, we have a paving project, and the one that really, that I've noticed here is on Page Boulevard in front of the big Y. And the city goes by, and there is, you know, we put in, what, four or five million dollars worth of asphalt on the, on the, on the road, and this is not simply EverSource, but other utilities go in there and they dig it up, they start, you know, working with their infrastructure after we've already paved it. And I know it's a difficult thing to get it all coordinated, but is there any more effective way than what we're doing now to coordinate when the city has a paving project, and we'll say, let's say hypothetically, we want to pave Karoo Street, to organize that with the Water Department as well as the gas company and the electric company and whatnot? Because it does seem as, throughout everyone's best efforts, that this continues to happen. And this is simply a way of, we're not assigning blame to anyone, but we're simply saying we have a situation, and how do we make it better? And the Page Boulevard is kind of a perfect example of that, because after we paved it, you know, I think utility companies, I don't know if it was EverSource or wherever, had to go through and go through the pavement and do their repair work. I mean, I don't know if there's a repository, or there's an online database, or is there any way to better coordinate that we go in and do the utility work first and then pave the road? I guess, I know it's a difficult question, Chris, it's not the first time you've heard it. This is not the first time you've heard it. Maybe you can give us some insights on it.
Well, number one, on St. James Avenue, that road has not been final paved.
Okay.
It's been final paved for a few months. The pavement that's down there is surface pavement. However, utility work is still going to be going on this spring, or excuse me, this spring and this summer, until the road is final paved, probably later this summer. So what's out there now is, some people may think it's done, it's not. That's part of the state project. What we do with the utility companies is, we probably have been averaging four to five million dollars worth of paving every year. And every year in January, we probably send out a list of about twenty million dollars to all of the utility companies. And that includes EverSource, Electric Gas, Comcast, Water, Sewer, et cetera. And they comment on basically every street that we propose paving on that list and get an idea of where they're going to be working, whether it's one year out that they need to do something, or two or three years out that they need to do something. Same with Water and Sewer, and where it ends up kind of coordinating, where our coordination efforts is that in a lot of cases, we end up having to delay paving simply because there's going to be a lot of work going on. You know, Bay Street, we did a number of years ago, we had to wait two or three years. One of the roads that's going to be on our paving list this year is Union, excuse me, a section of Union Street, which we've been waiting for, for a couple, three years, for the utilities to get out of there. Most of, and we have a moratorium on our streets that, right now, three years, nobody, nobody can touch our streets unless it's an emergency, whether it's gas, water, are usually the two big ones that we deal with as far as emergencies on there. So we do pretty good coordination and get a plan from each one of those entities as to when they're going to be in a roadway, so that we can, you know, plan. And if it's going to be four, five, six years out, you know, we're not going to wait four, five, six years to pave a road. So we're going to make sure we get that roadway done and work with them. So most of the time, most of the time, we end up delaying paving, paving a little bit so that they can, when I say they, whether it's Water, Sewer, Electric, Gas, can get in there and do their work.
Just so, and I don't know the system, like, what is the coordination? It's like a more of an informal coordination that, that the utilities are aware of the major projects we're doing, and then.
Oh, yeah. If it's a mass, if it's a mass DOT project, and for example, the St. James Avenue project is, at the beginning of the project, all the utility companies get contacted, and throughout the entire project, there are utility meetings and coordination meetings, which the utility companies have to follow because they do get reimbursed by mass DOT. I think it's still fifty percent. So on projects where they have to relocate utilities, they do get reimbursed by the state a percentage, fifty percent of their work. So it behooves them to follow along on these projects. On the city side, when we're doing something, basically every year in the winter, we send them our, what I call our long list, and get their updated list, Springfield Water and Sewer, as I said, and Gas Company, to find out where their major projects are going to be. We had a meeting with EverSource probably a month ago to go over their major projects for this year as well, and some of these are the ones that you're seeing here, to go over coordination in the city and, you know, where we should probably stay away from and give them an idea of what we're going to be doing in an area of where they're working.
So if I could ask, how does it happen then? Like, because it does happen. Am I incorrect?
Absolutely.
So how, where does, where's the miscommunication or lack of communication happen? Like, is it, is there something we could do to implement that other cities are doing? Like, in terms of technology, computers, like a board where you were saying, hey, we need to call the, we need to call the Water Department, we need to call EverSource, we need to call the gas company, electric company, because we have a paving project, they need to take care of their infrastructure, and they haven't done so. So where?
No, in most cases, they, in most cases, Counselor Curran, they are, they do get out of the way. Sometimes it's a little delayed on the schedule on their side. But from a coordination standpoint, I, I don't have any issue on the coordination side with EverSource or Water and Sewer as far as coordinating projects and them getting in before us or what we're going to be doing. I think we're all pretty well aware, you know, unless there's a major problem, a major gas leak, major water main break, et cetera. I, all of us are pretty well aware what the, what the rest of us are doing. And as I said, we do meet two, three, four times a year, and I probably talk to Amy, unfortunately, two or three, four times a week, as we go through all of our, right, Amy? But we do, we talk often and share information of projects, and, you know, I meet with their side. My staff meets with their side as well. So I think from a coordination standpoint, we are pretty well coordinated on the work that's going to be happening in the City of Springfield.
Then if, not necessarily EverSource, but it does happen, that utilities do come and kind of tear up something that we just paved. I mean, am I incorrect?
The only way they're going to do that with me if it's an emergency. And, you know, they, there have been times where a utility has come to me and said, oh crap, we do have a problem here. We got to fix it, and in some cases, I make them repave the entire road. But those are very, very few and far between at this point.
And just because we have the whole staff here, I mean, the other cities and towns that you work with, do they have a different way to coordinate with city in terms of paving? I mean, is there a more advanced way that?
I think it's very, I think it's similar to what Chris described. Really, it's about the, the long-term plan, so we can match that up with the EverSource long-term plan. And Chris mentioned his long list, and that gets trimmed down to about, you know, twenty-five percent of what actually gets paved. So we're working with him, like he said, on a continuous basis to bring in those projects that are on the long list to make sure we get that, those projects queued up in our plan earlier than later. And like Chris said, if we do have, you know, an issue on a pipe or whatever, we'll say we need to replace this, and he can work with us to push a paving project back and vice versa. If he tells us this road has to get paved in the summer, like the project you mentioned earlier, Page Boulevard, we're going to make sure we get it into our plan, and that gets done, you know, starting in April ideally. So it's, I guess, you know, to your, your term informal communication, but I think it, it all comes down to how often we're doing that, making that communication. The towns that I've seen that are really successful have the most structured finalized long-term plan saying, these roads are going to be paved this year, next year, and you have a five-year window, and they know exactly what they're going to be paving.
But is there anything more advanced, like, in terms of like, across the state, where you would have like a computer program, like, say, EverSource would say, all right, that Springfield's going to pave Karoo Street. So you know that. The Water Department's been informed, the Gas Company's been informed, the Electric Company's been informed. Is there anything like that, or is it more just like, we just call up the DPW? Like, in any of your communities, Wester, Eastwood?
Yes, we, we, we serve two hundred and twenty communities in Massachusetts. Hundred and twenty-two of them are on the gas side, and we have these meetings every year at the beginning of the year to get an understanding, just like how Chris laid out, and that's how it is, to make sure we're coordinated on the potential projects that we have in the queue for the next couple of years, and also following the pavement plan, so we can kind of work in that coordinated fashion. Now, Chris did mention, though, there is that, from time to time, those, those. Now, Chris did mention though, there is that from time to time, those, those emergencies, just like the city would have the water main break, there could be a, you know, a, a, a gas, a gas issue that needs.
But there's no like database, you don't have like a computer program.
It's.
And if I may to that point, I think, you know, on our side, we may have, you know, a SharePoint database or something, but we do run into security issues. And I think, I assume that the city would have similar issues, right? If you're trying to share a database with outside entities, you end up having a lot of security concerns that can make that difficult. And I did wanna add to the point about emergencies as well. We really do see those emergency leaks and almost especially in cities like Springfield that have a lot of the leak prone pipe. And then additionally, when we're categorizing whether or not a leak is an emergency, we do take into account things like the paving, so there's a lot of paved areas in Springfield, right? There's a lot of high density um population zones that would lead to a leak being more likely to be identified as an emergency. So that's for us at least, another reason why we really think it's important to get this leak prone pipe out of the ground, because it really reduces emergencies in the immediate community where we see that pipe, and we think that doing more of these projects in Springfield, I think you'll see more of those benefits. And one of those benefits is fewer, you know, new paving that needs to get.
Wait now, do you guys coordinate with the water department, like when you're doing Sunner Avenue, do you tell them, all right, we're doing Sunner Avenue, so we're gonna tear up Sunner Avenue? So if you guys have issues up here, maybe this is your time to, to draw, does that, is there any conversations between the two uh uh departments at all? Or entities?
Well, before you, I'll, I'll answer that from, just from a, from a city standpoint, if we're dealing with a mass DOT project. Uh the entities coordinate through mass DOT uh on the work. For example, last year, EverSource was doing a, a lot of gas work and a lot of electric work in Sunner Avenue. And the work that's on the agenda uh that was tabled is kind of, I don't wanna say the last phase, but getting near the end of all their gas work that they have to do. And that's all, that's, that, that work was coordinated through us, cause that was pre um uh project construction. Uh but the coordination with us, we do that through our permit program. Uh so that, yeah, somebody's not working on, you know, one side of the street uh in front of, you know, somebody's house, and then somebody's working on the opposite side. So we coordinate that uh to make sure that that doesn't happen. Uh but along a corridor like that, if we're now in a mass DOT project, mass DOT coordinates that.
Okay, that's, well, let me, let me uh.
My, ma- on a maintenance development, uh 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 my position, I know, you know, my concerns are a lot different.
Thanks guys for coming, appreciate it.
Sounds good.
When it comes to, say, the actual fixing of the pipe, um what is the, what, you know, the cost to profit, what is that?
Yeah, so I think you're asking about like, what's the customer impact from a dollars and cents perspective? Uh which we get a lot, and obviously this winter caused a lot of concerns with high bills, which was a number of factors and drivers. What I would say is the, if you think of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we're talking about these GSEPs, because our gas system enhancement program. Uh we're replacing about three hundred and five million dollars of leak prone infrastructure across our EverSource gas and Massachusetts footprint, so that's the three hundred and thirty thousand customers, the sixty-one communities, mostly Western and Southern Massachusetts. Three hundred and five million dollars of projects across the whole service territory over twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um from a customer impact perspective, that boils down to a little under three dollars and fifty cents a month. That's because when we access capital, we, we don't collect all of that three hundred and five million dollars in rates from our customers today. That cost recovery is spread over decades, over the life of the project. Um and so the amount that we're collecting from our customers through our rates is actually far less than what we're spending on the system every year. So we have to access financing in order for us to be able to close that gap. We borrow money, just like any individual would to buy a house. We also access capital and borrow money from both debt lenders and from equity investors. I will say that the, the return that's required for us to be able to access that capital, either to pay back the interest payments or to pay back those who have given us their equity, is fully regulated by the Mass Department of Public Utilities. It's capped, so that if we earn too much, every dollar will flow back to customers that we've over earned. And if it's a cold winter and our revenues are too high, same thing, our revenues are capped and restricted. Going back to customers, that's one of the main functions of the D P U, our regulator. Every state has one that is watching every dollar we spend like a hawk and ensuring that we're not earning too much. Um but ensuring that we're able to attract that capital.
Now, when you're, and 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 I just wanna, as far as that goes, um now when we factor in, you know, cause I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I know kind of like, so now when you factor in the infrastructure of, say, uh, streetlights. How does that work? Like, we pay for streetlights, correct?
Yeah, so our electric and gas operations are separate and the rates are separate, but it's all the same idea. From a rate recovery perspective, everything I said about the gas.
No, I mean, like, uh, are streetlights that are all blown out? So say like what happens is, and and where I kind of have an issue, and I know Counselor uh Dowley has kind of uh brought it up. Um we have a bunch of streetlights that's been blown out for, for like years upon years. Um a lot of times, when you're factoring in your numbers, okay? Um for me, factoring my number, if I said, hey, I'm gonna replace all these streetlights, there is no return rate in replacing those streetlights. But if I replace this gas, right? I get a rate of return because it's gonna make it more efficient, but with the streetlights, those are things, blown streetlights, I mean, blown ones, those are things, how do you budget those? And and why aren't those budgeted like this? I know you don't get a rate of return with the street, broken streetlights, like how does the broken streetlight factor in?
I'm not sure I follow your question, I would say generally, it's the same same framework, which is that.
Do we pay for streetlights? How, how does that, how do I, huh?
Yeah, we have, David can speak to that, he's.
You should join the team. Yeah, David, bless the electric side.
Thank you.
Very intimately familiar with the streetlight issue in Springfield, uh my group works on that. Uh yes, the city does pay a rate for a streetlight, uh at someone can do, I guess, a rental, but you're paying a rate for the streetlight, uh we provide that service.
And I think, I hear if it's the broken streetlights, do we still pay for them?
You're paying the rate for the light. Regardless, it's a monthly charge, it's a monthly rate for the street that we have to either repair or replace them. I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, because we, we have, we, we, we have um numerous, numerous, numerous uh streetlights that have been out, I know. I'll defer to Counselor Dowey, I'm sure he wanted to talk about it, but I'm just wondering, how do we factor it in, we got blown streetlights and we're paying for these things?
So let me.
Um uh uh and and Chris, I was talking about being able, uh how would we be able to get an audit as a council body? I wanted to be able to, what Attorney General, who, who, can we get an audit? How do we do that?
We can, we can do an audit, my recommendation would be is that we wait a little while. And the reason why I'm saying waiting is EverSource is eighty percent done with the um uh transformation from uh the high pressure sodium and other lights to LEDs in the city, which will probably be done during this year. Uh and so I think if we waited until that's done, we would have because we're, what you're probably gonna do is get a lot of lights that are out that a week later are fixed. Uh simply because of the uh, the LEDs don't go out as much. So I would make a suggestion that we would wait until we had that all done. Uh.
Who is that around?
And we did one, I wanna say eight years ago, um in, in concert with EverSource on streetlights, but um they're, they're eighty percent done now, we have about fourteen thousand five hundred lights. Uh so we have uh just a hair under three thousand that we're uh still need to be redone in the city.
All right, I'll, I'll defer to Counselor Dowey, I see he, 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 Counselor.
Uh thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, um thank you for recognizing me. Um and good evening to all, everybody and to the EverSource representative, and thank you for being here. Uh let me start off by saying that you guys, EverSource, are an important part, important partner uh for the city, uh but we have, we have some issues. And I think, I don't think that we can hide that, and the question is, how do we collectively uh fix those issues without? Please forgive my candor, being led by the notes. Now, I do have some things I wanna talk about, but I don't know, right now, start with the light posts. Um let me start backwards, uh don't forget, Chris, that I requested information, which I'm expecting about three weeks at what this point. Uh and I, again, regarding with the light posts, I wanted to know information, I asked this in a committee meeting a while back, and I think, uh, I don't know if Amy was there, but uh I know you were there for sure, Chris. Uh about the amount of work, um hours spent on light, on uh streetlight, we play, streetlights work. How many man hours are dedicated to light poles in the city of Springfield? The amount of light poles that are fixed and the amount of light poles that are out. Now, the last meeting, they tried telling us, the EverSource, that there were only sixty-eight light, lights out in the city of Springfield. Well, then they told us there were sixty-eight lights that they know of, which is a different story. And so the, to answer your question, I believe was uh uh you, Counselor, uh Malo, uh uh Counselor Brown. The city does pay three point two five million dollars a year for electricity for the light pole, so three point two five million dollars in this economic climate makes me feel some kind of way. And we have issues. In the past, granted, it wasn't EverSource at the time, it was Western Mass Electric. They had crews that went out. So it was the company who was responsible for identifying when the light was out. Now, that responsibility has been shifted to the consumer, because you guys won't know about it unless it gets called in. And I have issues with that, I really do, and I totally made you that in the budget hearings, cause the system that we have is not working. I also think that we need to have a complete conversation about uh this issue about putting uh black aluminum lights throughout the city, uh particularly in my neighborhood, I've been getting a lot, a lot of concerns from my neighborhood, particularly Sunner Avenue. Uh and I will finish with this, the paving. Uh you know, you guys come in and I know you do your best, but this is really a pet me for mine, I have to call you guys out for this, EverSource. And I know you're gonna come back, you're gonna give us a sort of explanation, and of course, you're gonna give us a sort of explanation as well. My understanding is that if you open up the co- the uh, the street or the sidewalk, that you leave it equal or better than you found it. Well, you guys are not doing that. I am sorry to say, I'm gonna push back all the way through, you guys are doing an extremely poor job. I'm gonna give you a clear, a clear example. All my neighborhood, in the great district of Forest Park, you guys did work between Forest Park Avenue and roughly Trinity Church, maybe Continental Street, somewhere on there. Every time I go through that, it's really a very poor job, just like the road is completely uneven, a- and it's an issue, i- it's really an issue. And I look at all the other communities and I see that, you know, it's not the same. Whatever is opened up, they're better, so the question is, why are we having such a poor job on the roads after you guys finished working? I, I don't know. Uh you know, I really would like to hear some sort of explanation, a realistic explanation on this. Uh so those are some of my main concerns, but we do pay three point two five million dollars a year for the light post in the city of Springfield. I also want to put you guys on notice. And I do thank you, I really do thank you, and if I seem like I'm pushing uh being a little hard, it's because we really tired. You guys don't have anybody in the council meetings to give us information on to ask questions. You guys used to have somebody there, now I know that there's my, that is, there's difficulties in being able to work. I know that I'm sure you guys are having some sort of uh workforce issue, I'll give you a benefit of the doubt. But I, as a council, have an expectation that you guys are gonna have a representative at the city council meetings. If you don't, I will constantly vote against whatever it is you guys have on the table. Because I think it's an insult to the city council that there's no representatives to answer our questions, a lot of times we're sitting there scratching our head. You guys should have, I have an expectation that you guys are gonna have somebody in the city council to answer our questions. Mister, uh Mister Chair, thank you for the time, but this is some of the uh concerns I wanted to bring to the table. Uh I'm going to continue looking at the light pole situation because it's not acceptable, and I will have to say, Chris, uh I, I don't want to wait until all the lights are changed to LED, because that's gonna be time and it's, it's gonna skew the numbers. It's gonna skew the numbers, I wanna see a real account of what we have in the city of Springfield. And we know to drive through the city of Springfield, there's parts that are pretty dark. Summer's coming on, on the table, on the corner, and we know that summers could be dangerous here sometimes and challenging. So those are my comments for now, Mister, Mister Chair, I do uh look forward to uh continuing to hear the discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dowey, I see Counselor Perez, um I think Counselor Perez, uh uh we're gonna get Counselor Kern said he has a question, then we'll get to you after his question real quick, you got a quick question?
Just.
Chair, Chair.
Thank you, Malo, um Patrick, I, we have our tax assessor here, I just, uh, just a quick question, I think we, eh, am I correct, Patrick? That we, that we um raise about twenty-four million dollars after, on assessments from uh 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 pipeline here in the city of Springfield on EverSource. Well, how much we, how much does EverSource pay in property taxes for informational purposes as we're having this hearing here?
Sure, so in fiscal twenty-five, the uh electric company paid approximately uh seventeen million dollars of tax and the gas company paid approximately nine million of tax.
Okay, so just about twenty-six million dollars, am I right? Yeah, just about that. Two and two, and when um a new project goes through like an easement, I mean, how does, how does that cap factor in? We don't go out and reassess them over a one line, do we, or how's that work?
Yeah, so uh um EverSource, just like every other uh company in Springfield, they have to report their assets on what is called a form of list. So they report that, we actually hire an outside vendor uh to arrive at uh full and fair cash value, so it's the same standard that's applied to them as, as everyone else. So we do that every single year.
And our assessments are, they similar to, let's say, Worcester, how we assess uh infrastructure for property tax purposes?
Yeah, so the Department of Revenue uh has put out guidelines on how to properly assess uh utility companies, so we comply with that standard as well.
And are electric poles, in the light poles, are they, how, how is that assessed? Are they?
Uh yes, so everything is gonna be at full and fair cash value. So we do hire an outside vendor uh to basically take the form of list that the company provides and uh arrive at a uh value for that uh tax year.
Well, thank you, that's very informative, appreciate the information.
Sure.
Counselor Perez?
There was some of the questions, thank you, Counselor Kern. Um I'm just gonna recap from the last meeting and why we having this meeting today, so. One of the thing is that every time in, in uh as a counselor, EverSource's coming from us and we approving all the work. I think that establishing that before, just like the finance meeting um has their meeting, the maintenance department should have, should establish, and I mean, this is a food for thought, that before um this approval coming to the entire city, the maintenance department could discuss them. I myself is learning a lot from today's meeting. Um and I think that one of the concerns that I was gonna reflect today that has been discussed, how we as a taxpayer, what is our proportion of the taxes that we pay when it comes to this type of services? of the taxes that we pay when it comes to this type of services? The other thing that I wanna bring to the table is that I see that many, many, um, jobs, uh, being done around the city. Why, if you open a hole, what is the timeframe? And I think we need to work on that because I've been asked by the constituents sometimes, and I could see because of the weather, but sometimes the weather passed and still we have those hole, and I see many that happen. I think those are the things that through the maintenance development, we should continue, um, um, discussing. Thank you, um, to Counselor Davila and Counselor Brown, because I think this is a concern that has been for so, so many years. And this is the first time that I see that it's being addressed in a properly manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank Counselor Perez. Counselor Davia, did you have a something else?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, first of all, say thank you, uh, Patrick, for giving us that wonderful number of twenty six million dollars. Uh, that's, that's music to our ears, of course. And like I said, like I said in my initial statement, uh, EverSource is an important partner in our city. It's a partner that we need. However, I'm not gonna sit here and just be happy with hearing that they're paying twenty six million dollars and we only paying three point two five million dollars, the contract that we have with them. I mean, it seems like initially that, you know, they're doing us a favor. We have a contract with them. And I don't feel, along with many other people, that we are getting what we're paying for. Of course, we love the twenty six million dollars. I hope we can get more if we, if we could. But also think of the amount of money that the, the revenue they're taking in if they're paying twenty six million dollars. So I, 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 it's good, good music to my ear, but my, my initial position that we are not getting what we're paying for still remains. Thank you, Mister, uh, Chair.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, actually.
Okay, um, I just have a few and then we'll just, uh, we'll, uh, wrap it up. I know, um, there, just a point, point of information for constituents and people out there. Uh, when it comes to, I've had, I've had a lot of calls and complaints from constituents. And I'm not too familiar with how the breakdown works. Um, if someone can explain as far as, uh, the different programs, I've had people say, um, why are they paying, uh, they said like thirty percent of their bill? Um, and I know some people say it's the, uh, the, the, some of the people in, in the State House who could change some of that. Um, I'm just curious on that. Why, I know certain programs, we might say, say electric cars and things, like, we're paying, um, uh, uh, our bill is higher because of certain services that don't benefit Western Mass. How does that break down?
Yeah, um, we have been getting a lot of those questions. There's a few things. First, it's a similar story, but a little bit different depending on if you're talking about the electric bill versus the gas bill. But generally, you know, we're here today to talk about some gas projects. On the, the gas bill, there are programs that support programs, just like you're saying, it's energy efficiency programs. EverSource administers those programs. Um, they're available to all of our customers on the electric side and on the gas side. Um, so we encourage our customers to take advantage because it is a component of the bill that they're paying for. It's, if you look at your bill, this is something we're working on, especially after this winter, trying to make it more easy to understand. Uh, but there's basically three general buckets of costs on your bill. There's the cost of the gas supply, which is flowing through our pipes. We make no money off of that. We purchase the gas and it flows through our pipes, delivered to our customers' homes.
No, I mean, as far as what hits our, our pocket, as far as, uh, maybe, Mike, you, I've talked to you about it, as far as, uh, it's something what the governor or somebody could do something about as far as legislating wise, as far as re, maybe we can regulate something in order to, uh, change how we divvy up what we're, we're paying, cause we're, we're paying for certain things, aren't we?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanna take that.
I, I, he understands, but.
Well, I think so. The, the second category is the, is I think what you're driving at, which are these, they're called energy efficiency programs. It's under the Mass Save name, and that is a, a component of your gas bill. It's also a component of your electric bill. That starts with the state's objectives for a clean, um, carbon, uh, free system. Um, and what happens is the, the state has set a goal, uh, which we support, to achieve carbon neutrality by a certain date. Um, has benefits for everybody. And so we.
It impacts our bill.
That's right.
It impacts, I'm saying, Western Mass. There's a big discrepancy. Um, I've had people in my area who, they're kind of, uh, uh, they like to research a lot of that stuff. So from what I hear from people who researched it, there's a discrepancy as far as why, why are we paying for certain things, like based on where, uh, you know, like it, we could never benefit on some of the services based on, um, Springfield and we're paying for it. It's, it's like thirty percent.
No, generally those programs that, that, uh, are being paid for are benefiting the customer groups who are paying for them is generally how it's set up. But there is a large component of the bill, and I think we've gotten a lot of feedback, especially after this winter, uh, with customers with those similar concerns. So.
So what do we elect, so electric cars? So just stay right with the electric stuff, okay? What does that hit in our pocket?
Yeah, that's, uh, I would, so that's on the electric side, it's a minuscule part of your electric bill. Um, I don't have the numbers offhand, but, you know, in total, on the electric side, there's like five billion dollars of revenues and the electric vehicle piece is something like forty million dollars. I know, hey, forty million dollars is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme, in terms of how that boils down to your electric rate, it's less than a penny a month that a customer would be paying to support that.
And then how about the actual infrastructure of the actual, uh, ports to service the electric cars?
That includes that. I think generally, the customer is going to be paying the cost for their charging infrastructure. What has happened is there's incentive programs set up that are available in certain circumstances that flow through your electric bill. I think that the broader question you're asking around, you know, these energy efficiency programs, again, it all starts with the state goals. The utilities working collaboratively with a, a number of stakeholders come up with a plan that meets the state's goals, which then translates into these energy efficiency programs. And that is a component of, of your gas bill and of your electric bill. But it's benefiting, you know, this group of customers, whether it's on the electric side or the gas side. It's programs that are available to all. So one thing we're really trying to push, and this is an area where you could help us to the partnership, if you have constituents who are raising the concern, one thing we're really encouraging people to do is to try to take advantage of the programs. Whether it's the energy efficiency programs, whether it's help with paying your bills, and there are many programs available to customers who qualify to, to get assistance where they need it. There's a lot of things that customers are paying for now, where we really want them to be able to take advantage in order to help, you know, help them individually.
And I do understand as far as the state level, they're trying to really get aggressive with that. Um, so do you, you do feel that that does have a big impact as far as like the, the different legislati, legislators out there?
Well, we've had for a number of years on the energy efficiency, um, those are the programs, again, under Mass Save. Massachusetts has had very ambitious, um, policy goals. And again, we, we support those. We have, I think it's seven years running as the number one energy efficiency program, um, in the country. So we are really supporting and achieving a lot of these objectives, and it comes at a cost. But again, that's why we're really trying to get the message out to everybody to take advantage of these programs, cause they're available to everyone. And then we're paying for it now, you know, as part of your utility bill.
Oh, I don't have any further questions, but just to thank everyone for, uh, showing this, uh, significant showing of EverSource.
But hey, Chris, Chris, what, what do you suggest that actual date? So you said what, um, to get, to get an audit? Counselor W said we wanna do it earlier.
Well, I, and I, I severely disagree on that, cause we can do an audit today. And I'm gonna say a large percentage of those lights that are, I'm gonna, you know, the old style, are gonna be fixed sometime during this year anyways. So if we would do an audit, that's why I would suggest that we would wait. The other point that I just wanted to make, uh, in front of the council, we had five items that were tabled. Uh, there are six more from EverSource that will be on the agenda for April seventh, and I'm not sure if there's any more. There might be one or two that we had, uh, Board of Public Works hearings on as well. So in, at the council level on April seventh, there's gonna be at least uh, eleven petitions on there for, uh, for EverSource. And I know I'm at that meeting, so.
So I'm sure you guys have enough time to, uh, schedule a meeting with Maintenance and Development to, to get us up to speed.
We, well, I, I'm happy to do it. Yeah, I'm gonna go back, uh, probably eight years, uh, Counselor Brown. We used to have a standing maintenance and development meeting for any of the DPW stuff that was coming before the council. Uh, you know, basically, we would do it before the meeting. Uh, and that's, excuse me, that's kind of been taken over by the finance side, uh, because they have the, kind of the standing meeting. I have no problem with that. And, uh, in front of the council on the seventh, I think I also have four other items that are gonna be there. So if we would like to have a meeting, um, uh, before that meeting, I'm happy to do it. Uh, to go through all the things that are gonna be on the agenda.
Yeah, because a lot of times, like I said, it, um, some of these things, even if you have some of the information, um, I've seen once in a while, um, a counselor and a city person be able to still vouch for that individual not being there. You know, we've still, we've met on it, we've talked about it, we've been at it. You know, then it's just, now it's just, you know. But I, 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 I'll talk to you about the audit, Counselor Davio, real quick.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you. Uh, I, I just kind of responded to Chris', uh, comment. Uh, you know, Chris, that obviously we disagree on this, you and I, that's fine. Uh, I asked for this information about three weeks ago. I don't wanna wait months, I don't wanna wait months for this. Um, so, you know, just because you disagree, that's a meter, I don't get my information, Chris. I'm expected to get information uh, of, of what I asked about three weeks ago, uh, in conjunction with EverSource. And so I will be looking for this. Uh, and also, um, uh, I noticed that we have some people from my neighborhood, Mister Chair, um, uh, if anybody has a question, I don't know if you allow it, if anybody of, uh, of the, of the constituents may have a question, if you allow it, cause this is an important issue. Yeah, no.
Victor, if I could, you're, our constituent has left, but this is really the end of the meeting. I just wanna thank everyone online, everyone here. I thought it was a very informative meeting. We appreciate the courtesy of all these EverSource, Springfield City Hall. And thanks, Chris, for all your information and, uh, look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right. Good day, guys.